2025 St. Clair Shores City Council meeting to order. Amy, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgeson?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rabello?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
And Councilmember Karen has to be excused.
Move to excuse.
Support.
Move by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Rabello to excuse Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is proclamations and presentations. We don't have any this evening. Item three is audience participation on agenda items, a two-minute time limit. Submit before the clerk regarding agenda items. Do we have any? Amy?
Mayor, there is none.
Right. Item four is to request from Gerald Taylor to adopt a resolution for conveyance of bottom lands. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Come on up to the podium and... Well, here, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me. Excited to be here.
Pardon me?
Excited to be here. Thank you for having me.
Okay. I don't know if you're being facetious or not, but...
I'm not. It's been a long road, so I'm...
Okay. And where do you live?
27010 Corber Street.
Okay. And so I know Mr. Erie would like to opine a little bit on this too, but why don't you give us a little brief what you need here?
Okay. Yep, so...
And pull that mic up if you don't mind, Mr. Taylor, so everyone can hear you. Thank you.
All good?
Yes, better.
Okay. So purchased my house four years ago, five years ago now, 2020. And ever since then, I've been working with the state of Michigan, Eagle, to get a property line issue resolved, basically my deed corrected. So if you look at one of the attachments in the agenda, my current property line goes right through the middle of my house. And it's a hundred-year-old home or a hundred-year-old cottage that's been added on to a couple of times over that time. It's only changed families, from what I can find, three times. And so that third time was to me. You know, this has been an issue that has gone back that entire time. Mr. Somerville, who sold the home to me, bought it in the 70s, and he bought the property on a land contract, even though the home was already there. And this was one of the issues that was supposed to get resolved. But as I can tell you, it's four and a half years in of working with Eagle and the state of Michigan. It has not been easy. But here I am down the road. I had... So my application for the bottom land conveyance process has been approved. And where we're at right now is there's two actions. One is the survey, which showing basically the addition to my deed in a legal form, legal description form. And then the second action, which is why I'm here, is I need city approval for that bottom land filled, bottom land conveyance.
Mr. Erie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. The city is not actually conveying anything that it owns at this point. The bottom lands are owned by the state of Michigan. And the state of Michigan really makes the decision whether or not to convey what essentially are filled lands of this gentleman's property. The reason that the state asks for a resolution is really, basically, it wants to know if we have any kind of a structural or problem with the conveyance because of our particular situation. And I don't think that we do, so we're not really conveying anything. It's the state that's conveying it. They just want to know if we have any objections to it.
Questions? Mr. Rabello?
See, I knew Mr. Somerville. I've been in their house before. So the first thing I thought was, when I saw it, you wanted to get out onto the lake.
Mr. Rabello, could you put your mic on, please?
So I thought for you guys wanted to, you know, repair and right stuff and have a longer dock out into the lake, but it's got nothing to do with that. This has to do with how this thing's planted.
Correct, sir. Yeah, we've actually cleaned up the shoreline since we've lived there. There was a dock that was in disrepair for years, and over the last two years, we've taken it out, so... But, you know, that's no different than the last couple homeowners that have been there.
Right.
You know, they've maintained that. I think it's just over an eighth of an acre. It calls it out on the survey. But I'm no different than any homeowner that has had this place since it was built. You know, they've always maintained the property, so...
Okay. And that goes fine with the states. We just have to...
That's what they're asking.
Okay. Yeah. You're the house. They got their beautiful deck back in the back. I think it's still there.
The deck is what was... An ice dam took that one out.
Okay. An ice dam did?
Yep.
Look, it seems pretty simple to me. I would make a motion to adapt the resolution for the... Is this the right conveyance?
Yeah, to adopt the resolution for the conveyance of bottom land.
Of the bottom lands to Gerald Taylor.
Yes.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, moved by Ms. Rusi. Any other questions?
No. We vote right in your backyard.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. There you go, Mr. Taylor. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All done? Hopefully, the process gets completed for you. Item five, planning case, request for site plan approval for exterior renovations and the addition of a walk-in cooler at 27101 Harper, requested by Hungry Howies. This is the old Oster chiropractor. Sir, come on up. No, you can go first. We just need your name and resume, where you live, where the operation is, et cetera.
Well, I'm Dan Westendorf. I'm from Jeffrey Scott Architects. We're at 32316 Grand River Avenue in Farmington.
Okay.
And we're representing the Hungry Howies franchisee. Looking to open up a spot, and they finally found a good spot to go into in St. Clair Shores.
Okay. What do you want to do?
Well, we are raising the front of the building a little bit to add a little bit more of a parapet, to put a sign band on the front, as well as kind of conceal the rooftop equipment on the roof.
Matt, do we got any pictures of this? Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you.
There we go. So you can see the kind of beige area on the front there. Raising the front of the building a little to so we can put a sign on it. There's not a lot of space above the windows there.
Yep.
And then that will also screen the mechanical units on the roof that we'll need for our operations. And then on the back of the building, if you... This gray represented as a gray box there right now. There's a kind of a portion of the building that's been scabbed on at some point, that we were going to demolish that portion and replace it with a walk-in cooler. And we've previously been talking with the planning commission about covering that cooler originally. In the drawings here, it's showing it as just being an exposed cooler. We've been talking with the planning commission and last week about covering it with... What was the term? Was a 30-year warranty material. Basically, we're looking to cover it with either probably a masonry or a cement board, just to give it a little nicer look to it and protect it as well.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So a couple things. The... And Liz, maybe you can answer on the signage. Is the signage... Is it going to have to go to Sign Arm too for that big... That's plenty because it faces a street, and then it's got the little sign on the side too, and that faces a street as well, right?
That's correct. The east elevation is the one that faces Harbor Avenue. Eyeballing it, I think that one's going to be okay. The south elevation, the one that faces Ardmore Park, that one should be fine. That's no problem at all. They also have a pole sign that they'd be able to use, too.
Okay. I know that the planning commission was a little concerned about the dumpster and enclosure and where is that... That's going to go in the... When I was over there today, you can't put it in the alley, so you're going to have to put it somewhere in the parking lot.
Can you scroll up a couple pages to the site plan, please? There we go. So over on the right side of the... Just above all the parking spaces there, you can see a new dumpster enclosure. Yes.
Excellent. And just the last thing, you're demolishing that entire little add-on, because I noticed it's got like wood on it or something right now.
Yeah, it looks like it was maybe two different things that were scabbed on to the back of the building at some point. I don't think that either one is actually conditioned and really, really technically part of that space, so we're going to take that down and put our cooler in that spot.
That's a good thing. All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. One of the items of concern from the planning commission is no right turn on to Ardmore Park sign, but would that require recommendation from the police, coming to us at council of ordinance, and then our approval prior to the sign being erected?
That is my understanding. If it were to go across the street, but if it was on private property, it wouldn't necessarily be enforceable by the police department. It would be more of a suggestion.
Okay, that was my question. Is this something that would require administration and us to take action on versus... So it's a suggestion to put on private property, but it would not be enforceable?
I'm looking to the chief for that one. That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Please don't turn.
Please, pretty please.
Okay. I just want to make sure when the motion's made that that's clear, what that is referring to. Because sometimes when those recommendations are put in here, as an item of concern, they're referring to something that would require city action versus, please think about not turning, which I guess that's what is being suggested. So just as a point of clarification.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes, several places on the plan, it's called out existing unpainted brick. Is your intent to keep the brick unpainted?
On the two sides... Sorry, if you can go back to the color elevation there. On the two sides, on the bottom here, the east and the south, those are existing unpainted brick. We intend to keep that unpainted brick. On the west and the north, that's actually a typo. It's painted block, not brick on those two faces. And so since it's already painted, I believe it's kind of an olive green color, we're going to paint it more brown to look a little natural and more in line with Hungry Howies' color scheme.
I appreciate that effort to keep good materials and not just paint the whole thing. So appreciate that effort, and I'll be walking distance from this, so I'll be able to try Hungry Howies.
Move to approve? So moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess. And regarding the signs, we're going to have the sign that says no return on his... Currently on his property, right? And you're going to place that up, in case we all understand it. All... Mr. Rabello?
I just wanted to disclose, I have sold advertising to $100 before, so just to let people know.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We look forward... Do you have a time? Six to zero. Do you have a timetable?
Well, I think we've got the next ZBA meeting in February, and we can finish into our drawings, and we're probably three, maybe four months out from opening.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome.
Appreciate it. Item six is the review of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2026 through 2028.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Liz Coto, City Planner. What you have before you is a revised capital improvement plan from the one that was brought to you in December. We met with each one of the departments and made changes accordingly and updates as requested to each of the individual departments. If there were no expenditures, then there would be a zero in a column or a dashed line. So I am here to answer any questions that you may have. This is the three-year projection for each department, so this is not a five-year plan.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I guess as a starting point for the residents at home especially, but also for administration, unlike other capital improvement plans, like I think was established under, I want to... When the previous state managers, where we did receive some of the projections and like a wish list from the departments, we did have the justification sheets describing more of what the project is and everything. Right now, we just have a line item. So if this gets passed, this is a proposal only, it's reflective only of that, and we will be discussing these items more in depth and maybe striking some out or adding some as we go through not only the budget creation season, but the fiscal years following, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Sorry.
That is correct. As part of our budget process and part of the master plan, we are able to update this on a yearly basis. So this will be part of our budget process that will be coming up in March and April, and this can be modified, adapted. And for this year's coming up budget, they'll also have the justification forms as well.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure, you know, if someone sees something in here thinking, how could they approve that? Well, this is just a proposal at this point.
Yes.
It's not us approving the actual projects. It's a...
Conceptual?
Conceptual guide post for future development, potentially. I did have the one question about... This is at the very second-to-last page, the forfeiture.
Okay. I will try my best to answer that one.
Okay. Right now, we have, I see, new boat with DLEF, which is the portion from the city. We also have in here the portion of the new boat that is being funded by the grant that we just approved.
Yes.
Accepting, which I don't believe that grant money is going to be run through the forfeiture accounts.
I will...
So that probably should not... That probably should be put in the police... That segment that is coming from the grant probably should be put under the police budget as a funded, you know, source of funds grant, but not under forfeiture, because we're not running the funding we're receiving via... Through the forfeiture.
Through the actual forfeiture account.
And actually, it'll be put through through the motor pool.
Oh, yeah, we're motor pool, but yeah, exactly. It's going to be right through forfeiture. So that needs to be struck and put in the correct place. And I also was under the impression that we have issues with making budgets associated with, you know, future budgets with the forfeiture just for legal purposes, because we don't know how much money we're going to be taking in via forfeiture. So are there any problems associated with us saying, well, we're going to be spending this? I see we're not... While we do have new mobile command vehicles spun out till fiscal year 28, so we are kind of making a plan to spend forfeiture funds, which we may or may not have at that point, given we don't know what's going to be subject to drug forfeiture. So just throwing that out. Yeah, your pen up.
No, I was just going to answer your question. So you are correct, and that's why you'll see in fiscal year 26, a large amount of items that will be coming to council. But we do have a fund balance, even with that being in there. We're not putting any money out that we're projecting any money. If we were to have $0...
Okay, this is just spending the money that we currently have in the accounts.
Yes, correct. So we're hoping that eventually there will be somewhere coming in, but we're only projecting out... That's why you only see the small two amounts, and that's just pretty much purchasing the narcotics vehicle that we normally have done, and then just the command. We didn't put narcotics in for the 28, because we wouldn't have had enough.
Okay, because, yeah, one of the atseums I've always heard about this fund is you can't budget for it because of the uncertainties and the legal restrictions on it. So, okay, just wanted to make sure that's on the radar as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Rabello?
Yes, I can ask the most important question I thought I had is, this can change.
Yes.
This is hit or miss, and...
Yes.
Because the situation, the times, they can change.
Correct.
So Liz, how did you go about changing this? Do you and Justin and you guys went around to department head? I mean, how did you get this stuff?
Yeah, I initially met with each of the department heads and received the information from them, compiled it all together, then met with the manager's office, reviewed everything that the individual departments had put together, tweaked a little bit here and there, and then that's when we came up with this sort of final set of numbers and activities.
She went around to the department heads and eyeballed this whole thing?
Yep.
So Matt, Justin, and...
Dustin.
Thuston?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thuston. Okay.
Hey, Dave, I've done it before, too.
Okay, I'm sorry. And Matthew over here, you guys... It seems like a workable plan. So I, at that point, I will make a motion to approve the revised capital investment improvement plan.
Moved by Mr. Rabello?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Frederick. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven is the fiscal year 25 budget amendments. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I just have a few budget amendments to bring before you and ask for your approval. First of all, for the general fund, we do have some new revenue coming in that's from the 9/11 surcharge tax that came in that we weren't... That we didn't budget for. That was over $263,000. To offset that, we have a couple extra expenditures for the pool capital outlay, for the smart van, labor. So the net for the general fund is an additional $107,000 for the fund balance to the good. For the library, we just have a clerical correction, changing an accountant or does not affect the fund balance. The opioid settlement fund, we did not budget any revenue for that, so we're anticipating about $205,000 coming in for the opioid, which also will add to that fund balance. And for the water fund, we have the drinking water asset management grant that wasn't budgeted for that's just kind of a wash. It's an in and out, doesn't affect the fund balance. But we are also asking to move the funds for the canceled water projects back into the ARPA account. And that's about it.
Questions? Mr. Vitale?
Just one on the 9/11 surcharge. That comes to unrestricted general funds. There's a requirement that that go to Cerisa?
It came in from Cerisa to us and...
Oh, so it hits Cerisa and then comes to general fund?
Came... Yeah, it came to the city, and just came a check with...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Move to approve? Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Renee, thank you. I know this is your last meeting.
Oh.
So we appreciate all the service you have done for St. Clair Shores and keeping the books correct. We appreciate nothing higher really here than making sure that the finance is done and done correctly. We have a lot of trust in you, and we appreciate your years of service here. So we're going to miss you, but, you know, enjoy retirement. I know you're going to still assist, so again, we appreciate that in still helping us throughout a little bit of this year, so we appreciate that. So enjoy retirement, so hopefully it's healthy and long for you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Item eight A is request to repair or replace the motor pool vehicle lift. Mr. Brian Bamcock of DPW. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is request to approve in our mechanic's motor pool garage, one of our lifts. This is actually the biggest lift, the heavy-duty one that we have in there. It's in disrepair and has become unsafe to use. So we went out for bids and got prices for both repairing the existing lift and also replacing with a new lift. After reviewing the pricing, we got three good bids, some competitive numbers. We reviewed it with our mechanics, and it was their request to just repair the existing lift. So that's what we have here in front.
That's why we're going with equipment distributors.
Yes, the lowest bidder, yep.
Questions? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So I guess my biggest question, since we're repairing, because it mentioned in there about the cement being possibly compromised, is that included in that bid?
It is.
Okay. And then I also noticed that Allied is the one that put it in, and they weren't the lowest bid. So I'm just wondering, is there a... You know, with Allied being the one that actually, the original equipment was Allied, is that the same Allied company? Because I know it's been there a long time.
It has been there a long time, and I believe it is the same company. The guy who was the low bidder, I believe, actually worked for them. Or actually for the other company on here.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad we bid it out. Pretty extensive package you put together. I appreciate that for sure. And I'm glad we're going to do the concrete, too, so very important. I would move to approve. Support?
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rabello. All in favor to go with equipment distributors in the amount of $44,999? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Thank you. You going to get right on that, Brian? They're coming?
Yeah, he said he'll... It takes like a couple of months to get all the parts that he needs, but he's going to be out as soon as possible to fix it.
Okay.
We've already met with them, yep.
Eight B is request to purchase DPW vehicles.
So the second item is request to purchase seven vehicles, and this is through the state of Michigan, my deal pricing, which is how we've historically always bought our pickup We had been in the rotation of buying a couple... You know, every two years, we were buying new pickup trucks and then passing them, you know, replacing them within the DPW, and then passing down those trucks to other departments that were in need of trucks. Coming out of COVID, this is actually the first year that we've been able to get trucks through the state program, and we get some pretty good pricing. So I'm excited that we're finally able to do this again, and, yeah, we have kind of laid out a plan in here, working with the other departments, how we're going to pass down vehicles that are still in good working order for their use in other departments, mainly the Parks Department.
That's a good thing.
So you're buying GMC Sierras, different cargo vans and a couple 2500s and 3500s, right?
Yes. Yeah, we... The 3500 in the water department, we needed that. A couple of years ago, when we got into this lead program, we started... We had bought a hydro excavator, which is a vacuum digging machine, and it's a big heavy-duty trailer, and it's taken its toll on our trucks pulling that thing around. So this will be the first 3500 that we'll have to pull that around. And the other one, the last 3500 there, that's going to the sewer department, that's replacing a vehicle that we use to haul all of our block, our cement mixer, sand, and everything to rebuild, you know, catch basins, manholes, things like that. So we need the heavy-duty truck to pull those trailers.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. This is two cargo vans and five trucks, correct?
Yes.
I was looking at the budget, and the budget had one service van and six trucks. What was the change in that?
I met with the different departments to find out, you know, what our current needs are today, and this is the... What their needs are, and that does change, you know, based on the use of the vehicles. I know like that, the sewer department truck, that was something new that came up that, I know, like that, the sewer department truck, that was something new that came up that, you know, was not originally planned for when I was laying out the budget. So, I try to do my best, you know, a year ahead of time.
No, I understand that needs may change, priorities may shift, you know, availability of the vehicles may change or shift to, from when we had approved this in June, I think it was. But it also would be nice to have maybe that called out in the memo or something, because when we make the budget, we do talk sometimes down to the individual vehicle purchase. So, if that changes, because it's like, I don't think we had two vans, and I looked and sure enough, we had one van and six trucks. So, it's like, I don't remember discussing, anyway. That would be nice to have called out without having to refer or think. I assumed it was because of changing priorities or something, but I just wanted to make people aware that that has a change from what we had discussed in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
And you did mention we will be passing down some, what vehicles will be passed down to Parks and Rec?
On the second page, they're listed, in the middle of the page there, there's two 2018s, a 2016 and a 2013. Four vehicles that'll be moved to the Parks Department.
Okay, and then the other one sold to auction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, Brian, you kind of pointed out, actually, what I was gonna point out for the public, that the newest vehicles, two are 2018 to 2013. And then we've got another one, actually, three from 2013. And then we have another one from 1999.
Ninety-five.
Anyways, looking at these pictures that are taken, I assume they're fairly recent pictures that you took for that. They look pretty good. I think that's probably a testament to maintenance. Are we doing the oil spraying? Still there?
Yeah.
So, because vans...
Well, too.
Pardon me?
It's working well, too.
Good. I'm glad to hear that, because vans and trucks are notoriously bad, and ours are white. So, it would telegraph through here and for that age and having looked that good, granted, it's a photo, but still, they look pretty good.
Yep.
So, it's good. We're maximizing life and Parks and Recs will get good vehicles now.
Mr. Rabello.
One of the questions I had is that you're handing them down to the Parks and Rec Department. So, I guess my question was, they're not, they're not good enough for the DPW, but we're gonna give them to the Parks and Rec Department? Is that because of the wear and tear that the DPW department has that the Parks and Rec doesn't?
Well, part of it is we're able to purchase these trucks, you know, out of the utility fund at departments and pay for, you know, some of the depreciation on those trucks over the first, you know, usually we were looking at having them in that department for three to four years and then moving them down. So, but, you know, I think the guys do a pretty good job of keeping them in good working order, so there's still some useful life to them.
Sure, okay. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two 2024 GMC Savannah cargo vans, two 2025 GMC Sierra 2500 HD 4WD regular cab, four-by-four pro pickup trucks. One 2025 GMC Sierra 2500 HD crew cab, four-by-four pro pickup truck. One 2025 GMC Sierra 3500 HD SRW pickup truck. And one 2025 GMC Sierra 3500 HD regular cab, four-by-two chassis utility truck. In the total amount of $410,361 from the motor pool fund account 661-525-980.001.
Support with a comment.
Approved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Frederick.
Yeah, just a quick comment. The cargo vans are actually cheaper than the trucks, so we're probably gonna save a couple of bucks by making sure we use the cargo van instead of another truck. So, that's probably a good move there, of course.
Yeah, we are well under what we had budgeted.
Yeah, exactly. So, great, great work. Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
I just wanna make one comment.
Mr. Rabello.
Does this pretty much catch you up with everything? I mean, you guys are looking good for transportation.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Thank you. Item sixty is request for approval of contract extension for rodent-controlled. Denise Pike, CDI Director.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This is required, this is a request to extend the contract for our current rodent control contractor. They are offering a three-year extension with an optional additional two years at no cost increase from our 2021 contract extension. The rodent baiting program, we have a number of properties that are rodent-baited currently. The maximum number of bait boxes that any one property can receive, and this is for single-family residential. So, that's important, is two. The property must not have any code violations. They must sign a hold harmless agreement so that we can access the property, and they will hold the city harmless. And they also receive information about what is contained within the bait boxes, so they're aware of what's being put on the property. The bait boxes are actually inspected bi-weekly. If there is no bait eaten over multiple visits, then the bait boxes would be removed, or they're removed at the resident's request. There is an inaccuracy in the cover page. The actual last contract extension on the cover page says June 21. It was February 21, and I sent those minutes to Council earlier today. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. What is the average length of having the box at a property? Do we know that?
Unfortunately, we have properties that extend out 10 years with these bait boxes.
It just doesn't sound like it's being effective, then. If it's there for 10 years and there's still rats, either the bait isn't killing the rats or there are new rats coming and eat, you know what I mean? It just...
It is something that administration would like to change. It was something that was actually spoken to me about by a council member when I first started with the city of St. Clair Shores. And how do we rekind of vamp the program?
Yeah, that was going to my point, if we might want to look at the efficacy and how we monitor the effectiveness and how the program is managed, if it's still being managed, how it was 10, 15 years ago.
Unfortunately, the bait boxes, and I apologize for interrupting, but the bait boxes become almost emotional support for some of our residents. So, if we try to take their bait boxes away, it causes a lot of anxiety. So, I think that there is, and any next iteration of the program would be important to place a limit, in my opinion, on how long people can have a bait box until they have to start financially supporting that themselves. But...
It might be...
Mr. Letto, just to respond.
Yeah, and that is one of the things we have been in contact with, myself, Denise and Code V. I did sit down, we were looking at going through this extension of, we have to be able to come up with a policy and procedure that works a little bit more with today's times. I was just told, like I said, the same thing that Denise said, when, three, four years ago, before I was here, there was some looking at trying to revamp it, and there was some security issues, as Ms. Pike mentioned, just residents not wanting to remove those bait boxes. But it is something that we are going to look at. We will get that policy to Council as part of this new addition and trying to work on eliminating and weaning some of those off, especially if they haven't been eaten, but yet the residents are like, no, no, I still see them, I still want them. But yet, we show no indication at all that there is any rat traffic or any rat in that area. They just have that security blanket.
And there may be other things we can look at to introduce into the program to help manage this, too. I mean, if we haven't looked at this for a while, maybe there are some, some things we can update.
Yes.
Hey, this is a no-bid contract extension, a no-bid contract extension, so I, as a policy, do not vote on those. So, I know Code V does a good job, though. So, and I actually, you know, rat sightings and rat issues are something that always pops up on social media when they occur and they don't seem to pop up as much as they have in the past. So, hopefully, something's working here and maybe we can just fine-tune some things and continue working with Code V on these issues, which are important. Now, I'm going to jump ahead to a question. You had talked about what's in the bait box, so I'm going to steal a question from Dave, because he always asks this every time there's chemicals involved. Do you know if this was tested on dogs?
I do not know, but I would know that the dogs would get sick if they ate it, so we should keep them away.
Vitale may have faced, I was being a little facetious, because Dave always asked that, so I just wanted to steal the question from him. I know it's poison, so...
It's poison.
I'm just, and I know we take into account, too, when we educate the homeowners about their own dogs prior to us putting the bots out there, so they know if that's something they want to take into account or not. I was just being silly, Dave and Chris.
Chris?
Chris may have faced, like it was a stupid question, so, very good.
Didn't do that.
Well, there, I got, I took her question.
That's okay. Mr. Vitale.
He always asks about chemicals being tested.
Mr. Vitale.
Well, I think historically, rat poison, everybody knows, is blood thinner, and that's just the way it works. Couple of things I wanted to point out. I did informally ask about how we're trending on this. Seems like what you've indicated is a lot of them aren't going away, but my informal communications were number of new calls trending down. Would that be correct? So, we got a lot of emotional support boxes, as you said, but in terms of trend for new calls, new service?
Recently, I would say that that's not always the case. We have gotten, and this may be more prevalent, or it may be brought, being brought to my attention more because we have a new admin person in that role, who is just learning how prevalent this is. But I would say that with, I am told, with good hard winters, our population should decrease.
Yes. I was actually thinking that's one thing to be grateful for, for single-digit temperatures and in a long extended stretch. We haven't had that in a lot of years, so that should help drive it down. Also, just, you know, for the sake of residents to know, because an issue was raised about dogs, these boxes are basically a maze to get to. A dog can't get his snout into the hole or anything like that. I've seen them out in the field. And we are limited really by the state in terms of what we can do. We have to use a humane, what's considered a humane trap, can't use sticky traps, can't use snap traps, things like that. So, there won't be any new miracle treatments out there for this, but hard winter will be probably one of the best things for it.
True.
Mr. Rabello.
Well, I like the rat program. It works. Sure, it can be tweaked. Anything can be tweaked. You know, we just had a capital improvement plan that we, you know, worth a real lot of money, too, that that can be tweaked, too. So, that's a good idea to review it every once in a while, and I think the city manager has a nicer, can have a nice conversation with Code V. I think they have a good working relationship, and that's part of, you know, this whole thing, also is good working relationships. And I think we have a wonderful working relationship with Code V. A contract extension, I would say, in this case, is a great thing, because traditionally, these rat programs, if we were to put this out to bid, and he came in pretty low the last time, and I think it's a gift that he's holding the price, okay? Because, Mr. City Manager, in your opinion, what would happen if we were to put this out? And my opinion is, this thing might go up by a half, a third.
I mean, it's really hard to say, because we didn't put it out, but, I mean, looking at the 2018 numbers when we put it out, they were almost double what the prices were. The next closest bid was double of what the lowest bid was at that time. And the individual who has the contract is holding the prices from the 2018, which at that point was already double. So, I mean, you could just assume that if they came in, sorry, it was half of what the current was. You could assume, but once again, assuming is not a good thing that we do up here, so we don't know that answer. But we try to keep, as you mentioned, when you have a great working relationship and the person was half of what the lowest bid was the second time, and we're getting a no-cost increase, I think it's very beneficial for the residents, because even changing, if we were to go out and let's just say somebody was to go higher or he raised his price and it was lower, when now we have all the rat traps, we have to go out, get them off the residence, repull new ones. You're gonna have a lot of startup costs and upfront costs that will be incurred in here. So, there is, it's a large transaction that would take place and even to change vendors as well.
Maybe I should have used the word trending. Is that what they use now?
Definitely trending up.
Okay, so it seems, with the exception of one or two things, every time I think that we've, you know, gone out to bid, at one time, it was almost a lock that you were gonna come in, maybe like 10, 15 years ago, it was a lock that you were gonna win on the bid process, it seems to me. But times have changed. I guess the COVID generation changed this type of stuff. And so, for someone to hold a bid, I don't care who it is, I think at this point, we're ahead of the game. And like I said, I'm not into, at this point, I'm not into bidding this stuff out and having it come in higher, okay? Because it's almost a guarantee that this will come in higher. So, we have a nice working relationship, as it is right now with Code V, and I'd like to maintain that. And I think on both sides, there's an open book. So, with that, I will move to approve the contract extension for the rodent abatement services with Landscape Services slash Code V for three years, and accept the offer for the additional two-year extension with no increase in fees.
Moved by Mr. Rabello.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Burgess. Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, first time around, I didn't comment on the economics of this, and I should have, but, first of all, the idea of, as you stated, rather aptly, emotional support, rodent boxes, I think we definitely should look into after a period of time. If they want to keep this, you know, they can keep it, but it's gonna be on their dime. To me, even if it's like a pass-through, like we do for garbage cans or something like that, that's fine, but they gotta start footing that bill. And second of all, you know, I'm very, do much favor and kind of even campaigned on the idea of bidding out contracts, but I had no idea we'd come to a place where we would have so many contractors that would extend pricing. And, you know, the thought there is to say that, well, maybe we paid too much in the first place, but then we look at this bid from 2018, it was half what our next competitive bid. The likely outcome to me of a bid is this same contractor will come in with a modest increase, and everybody else will still be much higher, and we'll end up with the same contractor but paying more. So, in this circumstance, it's, it's hard to say. If they're offering this and they want to give us 2018 pricing, I'd love to buy a lot of things from 2018 if I could.
Yeah, me too.
So, I'm gonna be a yes on this.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nope.
Five to one, it passes. Thank you. Item eight D is request for approval of two lease, two reel master, three fifty-five D ferry mowers and a ground master 4500 rough mower from Spartan Distributors. Jeff Facet, Golf Course Superintendent. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to request approval for $241,905.21 to Spartan Distributors on a five-year lease with a dollar buyout for the two Toro reel master, three fifty-five D ferry mowers, and one Toro grounds master 4500 rough mower to the St. Clair Shores Golf Course. Annual payments over five years are starting fiscal, will start fiscal year 2026. It will be an operational expense, and annual payments will be $42,563.04 for golf and $5,818.00, no cents, for the Parks Department. On December 12th, we received a quote from Spartan Distributors to lease these three pieces of equipment. The pricing is set through Omnia contract, contract number 20232261. Under the contract, we get 22% discount off of the MSRP through the Omnia contract. Little background on the Omnia, because I wasn't too familiar with it. Omnia is one of the largest nationwide purchasing and procurement agencies that partners with schools, governments, federal and local, and nonprofits to help them solicit and secure the best pricing available across certain platforms. This particular pricing is a nationwide procurement from Toro, from Toro equipment. The lead agency was Mesa, Arizona, who partnered with Omnia to establish a national procurement contract for Toro equipment. In our particular case, we are receiving 22% off the MSRP for commercial equipment that was agreed upon between the Omnia and Toro at the time of this bid. So, on our current fleet, we have two current ferry mowers. They're 2006s. They both have over 5,000 engine hours on them. These engine hours is equivalent to approximately 375,000 miles on a car. So, we're starting to have some major issues with wear and tear on these mowers. They're starting to show their age. Price of parts are going up, making it very expensive to keep around. New ferry mowers come with a two-year standard warranty. We're gonna add three... We're going to add three years on top of that, which will give us 60 months on Toro's total protection plan. The new ferry mowers are also Tier 2 compliant, which means they meet the EPA mission requirements for non-road diesel engines. We're also looking to replace one of our rough mowers. Currently, we have two rough mowers in our fleet, one's a 2015 and one's 2019. The 2015 we're looking to replace has over 6,000 engine hours, which is equivalent to 450,000 miles on a vehicle. So replacing these mowers, we're trying to get a plan of swapping them out every 10 years. So if we swap this one out now, the 2019 model, we can swap out in five more years, and that would give us basically a 10-year rotation to keep these mowers. These mowers also come with a two-year warranty, and we're going to add three months on that for this rough mower to give it 60 months for, under the Toro, called it for total protection plan. The rough mowers we have, we use three days a week on the golf course, and we also use them two days a week at Kite Monroe. That's kind of the reason we're proposing some of the money from Parks to help out because we do mow the diamonds at Kite Monroe and the perimeter areas over with these mowers. Delivery date for these is approximately six months out from the day we order, which is why we're here now asking, so we can hopefully get them by the time July, August type sets in for the next fiscal year. The trade-in value of these mowers from Spartan Distributors, who we're purchasing the new ones from, there were $4,000 each for the ferry mowers and $10,000 for the rough mower. Our plan moving forward, if we get the new equipment, is to try to auction them off. So the same company, Rowley's, that auctioned off our golf carts this past year, we're thinking of putting them, they have, they do a couple golf course auctions every year. We would try to add these to the fleet to try to maybe auction them off and get a little more return for what we have on them. The research I've done shows basically these ferry mowers are rough, their average prices for ones we have are between $8,000 and $12,000 being sold, and the rough mower's value is about $15,000 to $20,000. Replacing these mowers, these three mowers is the start of our long-range equipment plan for the next 10 years. I'm starting to see it come up with my fourth season as a superintendent at the golf course, and the first three years really was focusing on the golf course itself, you know, fixing the drainage, fixing the bunkers, doing projects like the first T project. And now I think it's time that we start addressing the other concerns we have, which is the equipment. So any questions on that?
Mr. Vitale.
So if I'm understanding correctly what's being proposed, we're going to have a five-year lease with a five-year bumper-to-bumper mechanical plan?
Pretty much, yeah.
And at the end of that, we have the option to purchase the equipment for a dollar?
Correct.
That's a pretty good deal.
That's a good deal.
I wish they'd offer that for cars. Okay.
Ms. Rusi.
I was going to ask, what is the service, typical service life of one of these vehicles?
For which ones? Like in?
Or, I mean?
Either one.
Yeah, either one.
Well, our ferry mowers right now, we have our 2006s.
That's what I was looking at, so 20 years, we, you know, potentially.
We can get 10, I'd say the rough mower itself is a higher-end diesel mower. We're using that a lot more. That usually runs about 40 hours a week. So if we can get 10 years out of that, that's probably good. The ferry mowers, we cut fairways two, three, sometimes four times a week, maybe three, four hours a day when they go out, so they're not being used as much. So we should be able to get between 10 and 15 years out of those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Rabello.
What I like about, you have a plan, you have like a long-range plan for this type of stuff.
Yep.
Which is, you know, good for you.
Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm very impressed with the plan. I think that that is a smart way to go. I mean, we've got, as you mentioned here, 70 acres at the golf course and 30 acres at Kite Monroe. I mean, that's a lot. That's a lot of use for these things. And you get the $1 buyout, and then we can auction them off, right? Or do whatever, whatever you're doing. Or keep them, but auctioning something that maybe at some point in time is going to be worth even more money than what we're getting now, just because of, you know, the warranties and all and such. So I would make a motion to award the lease of two reel master, 355D fairway mowers, and one 4500 ground master rough mower in the amount of $241,905.21 over five years to Spartan Distributors, beginning in the fiscal year of 2026, as recommended by the city manager.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by?
Support.
And Mr. Rabello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Facet.
Thanks, Chad. Way to go.
Item 8E is request approval for the repairs and purchase order on irrigation pumps at the golf course. Mr. Facet.
Yeah, I'm also here to ask for approval for a PO for $73,100 to Kennedy Industries for the repairs on the pumps for the golf course. On November 13th, Kennedy Industries pulled both of our pumps through 240 horsepower vertical turbine pumps. We have no record of the last time these have been pulled. I know they're originally installed in 2008. We decided to pull them just for strictly preventative maintenance. These should be checked every five to six years. They should be pulled and looked at, and they have not been, so it was more of a concern. I didn't want issues to happen in the middle of summer. So if we get them pulled now, we can get them put in, and they should last us for a good five, six, seven years before we have to pull them again. And unfortunately, with these pumps, you don't really know what damage is involved inside of them until you take them and pull them out, and then they actually take them apart and start investigating what's going on. The pumps themselves, they're approximately 14 feet long. They go into, deep into a wet well. A crane is needed to take them out, so it's pretty high. There's a lot involved as far as removing them. The pumps do perform multiple jobs for the golf course. We use them obviously to irrigate the golf course. They wash off our equipment, and we also fill ponds on the golf course with these. And it helps also, we lower the storm level of the Roarbeck drain with these pumps. If we anticipate heavy rain, we can run these pumps, fill up our ponds, and by reducing the level of the Roarbeck drain, it helps our golf course flow into the drain and also reduces erosion on the banks of the drain. So just multiple uses for these pumps. Kennedy Industries comes highly recommended. It will do a lot of work with our DPW department, SEMSD, along with other municipalities in the metro Detroit area. And moving forward, we're working with Kennedy Industries now to get a preventative maintenance program set up where these, they're coming and servicing these pumps every couple of years, checking the oil, making sure everything's running right, and then possibly getting them on a cycle of pulling them out every five, six years, so we don't have to incur these large costs that we're dealing with now.
Just by the way, I did have to amend the agenda for this, and the reason I amended the agenda due to timing, right? As it came back, when the bid came back or the quote came back from Kennedy, it was eight weeks, and then, of course, you have to wait till it's completely done until I can get, they can get the crane in, right, in order of that. So I was concerned it could end up being 10 weeks out, and that starts getting into golf course time. So that was the reason that we got it last week after the agenda was out, but I thought it was imperative that we get this on this agenda now with the long lead time.
And then I understand that, you know, obviously, we did not bid this out, but there is, is a limited kind of job detail. There's only two companies even in this area that do this work, Kennedy Industries and then Detroit Pump. Detroit Pump's kind of newer, getting into this big stuff. We do utilize, as Jeff said, Kennedy Industries for a lot of our DPW stuff. And not knowing the totality, you know, as Jeff said, there is a lot that takes a crane to get it out. They're massive, they're large. In order to change actually companies and have somebody else inspect them, that would require getting another crane, transferring it to another location, having the investigation, and ultimately, the cost of just transporting that pump and then also having somebody else inspect it would be small compared to the negligible differences on the two companies. But Kennedy Industries has done a great job, and like I said, they are one of the large pump dealers in this area.
Mr. Rabello.
Great, great explanation. So in order to bid this out, it would be almost just sort of a nightmare to pull all this stuff up.
Yeah, you really can't, because the fact is, what he ends up is not knowing, it doesn't work, and so we've got to get it out, and then they have to take it out and disassemble it. That's when they determine that this is wrong or the impeller's wrong, and you have no idea until it's disassembled in a shop to determine what is wrong with the pump. And that's, and that's what we use. I mean, Mr. Babcock uses Kennedy on the different, as do I.
Okay, and you brought up the other thing. I was wondering about erosion and thought any, covered all that, so.
It's just a short time, sorry. Just a short timeframe we have to get this done, and we're not the only company or people obviously getting pumps pulled in the middle of winter. A lot of them do it so they can have stuff ready to go in the springtime, so we're, it's a short timeframe.
Understood. I move to approve the repair request and purchase order in the amount of $73,100 to Kennedy Industries.
Support. Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Vitale.
Do we right now, or is there an ability to record and log the amperage draw on these pumps when they run? Does a system like that exist?
Absolutely.
There is, yeah.
And he may even have, I mean, it may be in the building.
Yeah, we have an electronic board up there that does show.
Yes.
What we're pumping out as far as gallons and also power-wise, you know.
Well, just to see, like I said, the amperage draw on the pumps would be an indicator of how worn they're getting. So we keep that as part of maintenance to?
Yep.
Know when we're trending away from normal? Okay.
Absolutely.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Facet, thank you. And by the way, you look rather dapper today. You're a good example to the Parks and Rec and how you come to city council meetings. Fantastic.
Damn it, Rob.
I appreciate it.
At a glance, I thought he was one of our attorneys.
I appreciate it. Item 9 is consent agenda. Move to approve. Moved by Mr. Frederick.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Rusi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Updates and follows, Mr. Lent.
Mr. Frederick requested review of the potential relocation of a utility pool that is currently obstructing the sidewalk near Clean Court, located at 22601 East Nine Mile Road. CDI will work with the developers on relocating the sidewalk. Mr. Karen requested a deadline for the completion of updated boards and commission handbook. The updated handbook should include a consistent, comprehensive policy for minute takers and be made available for council review. Abby is updating the boards and commission handbook along with a new policy for compensation of minute takers. Once completed, she will send a legal and follow-up with council for review. Mr. Karen requested that the end of June financial reports be rerun after the audit is complete to reflect updated financials incorporating the audit figures Renee has submitted and attached the following documents. Mr. Karen requested a specific date from priority waste when the cameras on the trucks or a route supervisor will be implemented. All cameras have been installed on our 10 trucks that service our area. However, if there is a truck down for maintenance, not all backup vehicles are equipped with the cameras, but majority of them are. So most of the times, we do have, well, all the times we are running at full go, we do have the cameras on the vehicles. Ms. Burgess requested priority waste, provide an explanation for why their disposal of recyclables by emptying the recycling bins into the trash. Priority policy is anything that is inside the recycling can will be emptied by the recycling truck. Any trash or boxes that are outside the cans will be emptied by the trash truck. So even if it is like an Amazon box and you're sitting it beside your recycling can, they will throw that in the trash. They have to assume anything outside of the cans are trash. And if we do see anything, we report it. We actually have cameras on all of the vehicles. They're able to do a learning curve and also inform their drivers when they see something that is happening inappropriately. So feel free to please report that, and we can get that video footage to find out if that's being done.
Can I ask something on that?
Yes.
Is there a way that, you know, we could look into this or something? Because nowadays, with so many things coming in cardboard boxes, I know personally, I'm just gel-ush with cardboard boxes, and, you know, I could give you a solid brick of concrete that, or excuse me, solid brick of cardboard, probably weighs as much as concrete, just by putting boxes inside of boxes. Is there a way we could look into having a collection area for this or something, so we're not putting, because cardboard is one of those things that actually does get recycled, unlike plastics that get complicated with labels and types of plastic? So that, you know, maybe residents, if they care enough, or actually the convenience of being able to bring that cardboard somewhere, maybe just as a long range or something we could talk about maybe in a study session or something like that, feasibility? Because I would do that, honestly. I could just put a brick of Amazon boxes that I would bring to DPW or something like that, so I don't have to just throw them in the trash or spend my life breaking these things down or, I don't know, just a thought on that. Because I know there's a lot of complaints, and it seems very wasteful to put all that cardboard into a landfill.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Ms. Rusi requested that minutes from boards, commission, and committees be submitted in a more timely manner. Ms. Rusi also noted that several boards, commissions, and committees are not maintaining accurate minutes. She has requested that clear instructions be provided to outline the requirement for recording accurate minutes and adhering to proper Open Meetings Act procedures. Abby has provided a minute-taking guide that she has created. It goes over properly posting minutes, sorry, meeting notices, how to take minutes per Open Meetings Act, along with an example of minutes. Please let Abby know if you would like any changes before this is sent out to all board liaisons that is in your package.
Yep. I sent an email. Can I get the Microsoft Word document for that for markup purposes? And one of the big issues I've noted in the minutes and that I had brought up last meeting was just the votes at the committees sometimes are not being accurately recorded, who made the motion, who seconded the outcomes, you know, including who voted no on things, which is important for OMA and also for Robert future, Robert rules purposes, if they ever want to take it to a common motion for reconsideration in the future. And I'm not sure if the draft guide properly records that. So if you could get me the Microsoft Word doc, I could maybe start a, maybe some markup for consideration.
Definitely will, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
With that, we will go on to item 11, comments by individual council members. Mr. Frederick.
Wow, okay. All right, a couple things. First off, I think we all probably got a copy of this, but there's an Eagle Scout that is building a sensory garden in St. Clair Shores, near Roger, right outside the classroom in Rogers Elementary School, and needs some assistance in terms of funding. If we, if anybody would like to help out there, it's Matheson's Eagle Scout Project. Contact Rogers Elementary School at 586-285-8600. And by the way, most kids don't reach Eagle Scout until they're 18, and he's 15. So a very ambitious young man, and anybody out there that's listening that wants to help, we'd really appreciate it. It's a great program, and the sensory garden will be a big benefit to the outdoor classroom at Rogers. So I just wanted to mention that tonight. And then I guess the other thing is, is I know, Dustin, you and I have talked about fire overtime and how hard it is to get people to work that. I kind of dug into that a wee bit. We are, we are doing a significant amount of overtime to the point where each firefighter on average would be 240 hours of overtime, based on the numbers. So I'm not sure that, I mean, we're all, we're all thinking that, you know, some of the younger folks don't want to do the overtime, but I think that we're, we may be in a position that we're burning them out. That could be the other side of that coin, and I just wanted to, you know, make sure that as we, as we start talking about the SAFER Grant and all of that kind of stuff, that we're, you know, maybe we should be thinking about that sooner rather than later. And I know we've, we've talked about timing on that, and I just want to, I just want to reiterate, the pressure would be to do it sooner as opposed to waiting till, till next year. I just, I want to get that sort of on, on everybody's radar. I know that deadline is coming up. Did we figure out what the deadline was? Was that in March?
So you have 30 days once it's posted. The SAFER Grant has not been posted yet.
Okay.
So as soon as it's posted, you have 30 days to apply.
All right, well, I'm hoping that we'll be able to at least apply for that. And then, you know, we still have the option to, you know, say, hey, we don't want it, right? But I'm just, I'm just worried that with all of the, all of the, all of the overtime that these, these guys are working, not to mention guys and gals, not to mention the, you know, which has been my beat-the-drum thing, which we talked about, was, which is having an inspector and a marshal to help with the, on the prevention side, so. Okay, let's talk, also one other thing, and this is something to check, and Dustin, I think I sent you a note on this today, some trash cans up on Beverly. You know, we all get these every week. This just happened to be one where I got pictures and all kinds of other stuff and from a regular, you know, somebody who keeps track of what's going on in his street. The trash cans were in the street, down the street, laying down, and then behind a, behind somebody's vehicle. And again, we've got to get this fixed. There's room on the curb to put the cans. I get There's room on the curb to put the cans. I get it if they're, if they're laying down, it could be wind. These were all laying down and then the ones behind the car were upright. So I don't know, we got to do something with these guys. Do we have any plan on bringing them in or?
So we did. We did have a meeting with them last week and then I will pull up that video and I'll let you know if they were, where they were supposed to be when the truck pulled away.
Okay.
We are finding, I will say, a lot of things we are looking and checking on, they actually are where they were supposed to be when the truck pulled away. And especially now with the snow being on the easements, they're putting them there and they're falling off, they're falling in the road, then they're blowing away. So we've actually had a lot of residents that will call and complain about their trash not being picked up. We actually get videos of the truck going by and the trash not being out too. So the videos are helping a lot.
Okay.
Answer some of those questions. And sometimes, you know, so I might pull this one up and I'll get you the video.
That'd be great.
We, we know that the, the 10 trucks that are dedicated to St. Clair Shores all have cameras. However, as I say that, you, you, you may end up with one or two down in that vehicle, you know, might not have the cameras. But, you know, the specific 10 have the cameras on it. So if those 10 are always going, but that is not always the case, right?
Okay. I'd be interested in seeing this video for sure. And then, you know, I know everybody up here gets calls. And this just happened to be one that was pretty easy to bring, get it to you because of the pictures and all that. All right, let's just talk library real quick. Library is going to be hosting a real life clue game called Death in the Stacks. That will take place on February 7th at 5:00 PM in the library. Teams of up to six adults will solve clues and try to figure out the answers to who, where and with what happened. Registration will start on January 27th and it's available online, in person, or you can call the library at 586-771-9020. Spots are still available for the library's puzzle competition on the 25th at 2:00 PM. Teams of up to six people can attempt to be the first to complete a puzzle. Registration is available online, in person or again by calling the library. The Friends Book Discussion Group will be on February 12th at 1:00 PM in the library meeting room where they will be discussing Cast: The Origins of Our Discontents by Isabel Wilkerson. All are welcome to join and no reservation is necessary. Friends of the library is also hosting a half off book sale, Mayor, I'm sure you're going to like this, the half off book sale on February 1st. The sale starts at 9:00 AM. Friends will also be hosting a Books and Brews event at Baffin Brewery. This should be exciting as well on February 2nd from 12 to 6:00. Come find your next favorite book alongside your favorite brew. Come to the library on February 1st to celebrate Take Your Child to Library Day. There will be ice cream for breakfast, a scavenger hunt and a drop in craft. The Ice Cream Sunday Bar will be open from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM and is for children under 18. Limit one per child while supplies last. A drop in craft will be available from noon to 4:00 and the scavenger hunt will be up all day. Come and discover what the library is all about. And we did some analysis and by using the library's resources, St. Clair Shores residents saved an impressive $3,568,000, gaining access to valuable materials and services in 2024.
Come on.
Yes. $3,568,000. That's pretty cool. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale.
Okay. I'll start off by saying I had a, I got a call from a resident today at about 4:00 PM, which actually turned into a rather pleasant exchange. They were just calling to ask about a number of projects going on in the city. So I kind of, I think I'll try to update to the public what I talked to this resident about. The initial question was the former Rite Aid store at Martyr and Jefferson, that they'd heard rumors or something about this. I don't know if, if CDI, is there anything that you've heard about that?
No.
And, and that is more or less what I indicated to the resident. I said, it's quite possible that if another drugstore went in there under a different name, we wouldn't know about it anyways because that's the same usage, the same zoning, so wouldn't ever come in front of us. But I also pointed out that, and I didn't think she realized that Rite Aid is nationwide closing stores. So that's not really a St. Clair Shores specific issue. And I, I got to tell you that that Rite Aid was always pretty busy. So I'm really sad that nobody has snapped it up. I was kind of hoping maybe a Walgreens would grab it. But the problem is, is that it seems like they've won the big box drugstore wars. So they don't have to open it up and you'll just have to drive to their location. That's the downside of having sort of monopoly control of a market. But a good opportunity maybe for a mom and pop to get started down there. Then I was also asked about the former Kroger, former Nine Mac Kroger. And that looks like it's again going to be an Amazon.
I don't know if we can confirm that at, at this point. We don't have interior plans and that, but they are working hard to complete the outside and turn it over. And then, and then we hope to get the interior design plans and then that would give us more ideas. But that's where it's at right now.
I explained that, you know, my knowledge, which really doesn't come from anything from the city, but just knowing a little bit about that industry is that at one point in time, Amazon was looking to get into supermarkets. Then they became concerned about antitrust because they're in everything else. So they kind of took the foot off the gas of supermarket expansion. But I think now they're feeling empowered to get their foot back on the gas and get into groceries. So.
I, I think we are kind of hearing that, but we can't confirm that.
Yeah.
But I think it is that we can, we, we hear that.
I made her aware of the plan that we just voted on last week for St. Mary's to demolish. And I think a nice upside of that is it's actually going to bring back a lot of green space into that area, more so than it has currently.
And they'll be moving forward too. They're going to be going to Brownfield and DDA. So as you know, they'll be moving through that path too. So that, some of that will come back to us again under Brownfield. So, yes.
Unfortunately, it looks like Gabe's is in a holding pattern at 13 and Harper. And again, that's related to Gabe's chain. It isn't St. Clair Shores specific issue. And I have seen the email exchanges regarding stepped up code enforcement of that property and it's like we're on top of that. Okay. So that's kind of an update of some of the things that are going on. The other two items I have to talk about tonight kind of deal with consumer protection. And I'll admit that Councilman Frederick handed this one over to me. So I don't have a graphic on this one. But apparently the people selling water supply line insurances are back soliciting for that. I wouldn't buy this any sooner than I would buy Meteor Insurance. Very unlikely to ever need water supply line. What they're counting on is you thinking this is sewer line. Now, the sewer line insurance, even though our company that we've had in the city here for many years is phased, appears to be phasing us out. It is available through homeowners plans. It'd be great if somebody could come in and fill that vacuum because I've used that plan to, to good effect. But yeah, this isn't, this is not sewer line warranty protection. This is, this would be worthless and unfortunately just kind of playing on that idea for people. The other item I have, I actually do have a visual on for that one. And probably everybody has heard about home title theft. I know that, I see the commercials all the time. And I recently had a closing at one of our St. Clair Shores businesses here, Colonial Title. And they had flyers in there talking about a program for, from Anthony Fellini, who's the Recorder of Deeds, as well as our county clerk, to have a fraud alert put on properties. Now, I will say that this is more of a risk for people who have paid for properties, who don't have any kind of a mortgage or a lien or anything against the property. They go after those types of properties because it's much simpler. There's only one name involved that you have to falsify documents for. So what his office has done is, it looks like it's partnered with a third party to create a fraud notification system. And the way that works is, can you back up just a little bit? I wasn't ready yet. That's the website right there, which I know that's a mouthful, but all you really need to do is just go to Google and put in Macomb County Register of Deeds and that'll take you eventually to that site. They have a great big red button you press there that says Fraud Notify. So you click that button and then you'll be brought to this next page. And that is simply, it's not very polished. That's, that's one thing. This is a third party company. It's a lot of boilerplate. And you get down to the bottom and they're asking for your email and confirm your email. So you're going to put a good reliable email address in for yourself and agree to their terms. And then you will be brought to the next screen. Okay. And that will ask you to put in names. So if anything crosses the desk over there with a particular name on it. So for instance, I registered mine as Christopher Vitale. I went and I looked at properties that I own, made sure that it was in Christopher and not Chris or anything like that, just to be sure I'd be getting the right ones. And I guess there are other people out there with that name. So I may get notified when they sell property too. But I will just disregard that if it's not my address. But, so I put that in. I also put my wife's name on it too. So, you know, that's just another way to get through it. But it's pretty simple. You'll put that in and then it'll ask you in that lower right to confirm. When you do that, then you will get the next slide, which you will receive an email confirmation notice and just telling you that you've signed up for it. And it has me on there. You can do this for LLCs, for, for business owned property as well. Just a very good and, and helpful thing that our county clerk is doing for residents. And also shout out to Colonial Title for keeping the stack of those on their front desk. He actually came up to me and saw that I was reading that and I said, I'm going to talk about this at a council meeting. This is a good idea.
It's free, right?
And yes, it's totally free. And then he also said to me that actually a lot of people are also recording, that own the property whole, are recording liens against themselves. Just to add another encumbrance, if someone were looking to steal that title, they would have to jump through yet another hoop to clear that lien. So I mean, that may be an above and beyond, but it is kind of an interesting idea. It adds another layer of protection.
Right.
So that was all I had. Everybody stay warm. Dearborn Heights closed today. I'm going to be teasing my friend that lives in Dearborn Heights about what your city can't handle single digit temperatures. We stayed open. I mean, it is January for God's sake. So that's what I have. Everybody stay warm.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess.
Yes. Just a couple of things. One, last meeting, we had a lot of people here talking about the cat situation in the city. And Dave and I did have an opportunity to sit down and talk with, a meeting that took place today. And we are going to be moving forwards with some suggestions for procedures. We do have a meeting coming up, but I just wanted the audience to know that we're not putting this on the back burner, that we really are trying to get some things resolved. And we'll be updating as soon as we come up with some more information on that. Next, just some fun things. Our Aqua Freeze, since we're all freezing anyways, is going to be this Saturday. It is from noon until 9:00 and there is a lot of things going on. Hopefully it's not going to be too cold for us to be out there. But it is only a one dayer this year. So it's going to just be on the, on Saturday. Like I said, noon, I just lost it. Noon to, to 9:00, there's going to be food trucks, horse drawn carriage rides, beer tent, live music. It's going to be the Orbitons. Very excited about that. Putt putt golf, hot chocolate, fire pits, live ice carving shows. And we got a lot of great sponsors for that. So come out and check that out this Saturday. Had an opportunity to go out to the Firemen's Night, the races on Friday, and I had a blast. I just had an absolute blast. Loved all the, the dress up of everybody there and the food was phenomenal. And just had a really, really awesome time. So. And then Sunday, we had our chili cook off at St. Isaac Joes. And we three got to be judges and that was really, really a fun time. And I just got to say that I was really excited to be sitting next to Candace because she was giving detailed commentary. By the time I got to the other side of the table, they already knew what it was going to taste like, if it was too hot or too cold or whatever.
I have opinions.
But it, it was a lot of fun and I enjoyed myself. I was a, Dave and I were, last year were judges. And I got to say this year was, if I can say the word funner, it was just funner. We ended up staying until like really, till everybody was cleared out of there. It was so much fun. And so kudos for the men's group there at St. Isaac Joes had a really good time. And that's it. Everybody stay warm.
Excellent. Thank you.
Candace can add the anti double dipping or how that looks set up.
We put him last. So he didn't accidentally double dip into the, double dip into the communal cup.
Oh, anyway.
So he was last. He could yell he wanted out of the cup.
That was a good call, for sure. Mr. Rebel.
I even agreed with that. A couple of things here. Ron talked a little bit earlier about the, with the fire and the safer grants and, you know, the overtime. So I would actually sort of piggyback on that because I'd like to see some of the, you know, the data and so forth. That's sort of interesting. Okay. So behind me, behind me, I don't know if you guys, oh, sorry. Behind me is something that's important to the City of St. Clair Shores Memorial Day Parade. You want to flip that over?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Can you guys see that?
They'll, they'll see it.
Can they see it, Mayor?
The camera will grab it.
Okay. So this is what we would call the St. Clair Shores Memorial Day Parades $100 or more Club, okay? So our goal is to fill this up for our 72nd, man, that's a long time. 72 years of our St. Clair Shores Memorial Day Parade. So this board here helps fund our 2025 parade and parades that would come after that. So I guess I'm hitting the go button tonight. Anybody interested in donating $100 or more, you join our special club. We take pictures with you. I want to throw a special shout out to our new Memorial Day Parade Director, Pam Mason. Working already hard at putting together the best parade you're ever going to see, coming down Harper this year. Okay? So that's a $100 or more board. Contact me. I'm pretty easy to get ahold of in one way or another. You can email me and my telephone number is 586-489-8117. Parade button has been hit. So we're on our way for the 2025 parade. I wanted to still put, reach out to anybody interested in shoveling snow for seniors and elders. We got through our first snow event pretty good and very little complaints. We missed some people, but remember, we have to, we're following the rules of the city. And Mayor, it's two inches or more, correct? I just had a flash. So when it snows two inches or more, don't expect the snow brigade to come out, you know, if it's just a half an inch of snow. The snow, it's got to snow a little bit and give them time to get there if that does happen. Looking for volunteers for that. Call me at 586-489-8117. I wanted to, we're, we're going to start our, our projects very soon for the police and fire buildings, for the demolitions and so forth.
They're already started. They're being de-energized.
I didn't see. Somebody started? Okay.
They've been started and they're, they're working there. They did to remediate the place with et cetera. So it's, it's been ongoing and I think that they're, they're nearing demolition now. So I think the buildings have finally been de-energized and ready to go. So we're, we've been in the process for several weeks.
I'm just sort of looking from the outside in. I didn't know they're, they're working from the inside out. Okay. Wonderful.
It's, it's, you're, you're looking for the wrecking ball. It's coming.
Yeah, the wrecking ball. Okay. The action ball.
Yes.
If we could, at one point, we talked about this a couple of years ago with Chris Rays. He's sort of overseeing the projects. Maybe as this, as this phase starts, he can just sort of give us updates every couple of weeks of what's going on in there. Because I think we brought that up at one point.
Sure, we will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I wanted to also announce that the Optimist Club of St. Clair Shores, I belong to that, and we are going to bring back, after a few years of absence, we are going to bring back the Champions Banquet, and I'll report more on that event as it gets closer. It was one of the cities I thought was, one of the city's best. So I'll tell you a little bit more of that later on. Dustin, how are you? Did you get my pictures?
Yes, Matt.
Matt? Or, I'm sorry, sorry, okay. Matt, are you ready for my pictures? Okay. I don't know what's, I'm sorry, Matt. Okay. I've seen you all day today, too. Okay. So this is just an idea for people, because we did it, and it worked out better than I ever thought, okay? Every once in a while, I come up with an idea, and this one, I thought, was great. This picture is taken at our grade school, Beechwood, it's now Beechwood Manor, okay? Assisted living. We had a, a class Beechwood reunion. It was just for the grade schools. So I'm going to tell you what, it was, it was a thrilling experience. I would recommend this to anybody out there listening. I've been thinking about this for a couple of years. We finally, we finally did it. My sister Florence, who's on the left there, she attended Beechwood Grade School. My other sister there was, too. There might have been over 100 people.
Oh, nice.
And I, what I thought was special about it was, these are the first, the grade school people, those are the first people you ever meet, really, outside of your family. And the guy on the right, when I saw him, I cried. His name is Clark Whaley. Clark Whaley was the first person I ever knew besides my family, and he showed up. He came from way out of town, and he showed up at that. So I'm just making a recommendation. It was, it was incredible, and we caught up a lot with some of these people you haven't seen in 50 years. So anyways, try that out. A grade school reunion. This is part of what Linda was talking about a little bit earlier, St. Isaac Joes', the fundraiser that we all attended here, and that's really the, that was the men's group, and these guys are some of the hardest-working folks you're ever going to see. So thank you, St. Isaacs. There's, there's some of the winners. Candace, we didn't get you in the picture, so I apologize, okay? So those were the winners. I think Stan, Stan Yee won it in the middle. Did he win the whole thing?
No.
Who won the whole thing?
Um...
I don't, it doesn't matter. We just had a great time. Good fundraiser.
Pierce now, Stan looks like he's the winner. He got his picture taken.
He was a people's choice.
Okay, he won something.
All right.
If you could move on. Okay. It's cold weather out. It's, it's cold weather out, so make sure, that's my dog, Cleo, make sure that you don't forget those dogs outside, or cats, or whatever animals you might have, for too long out in the winter.
It's too cold for you?
So Candace brought up a little bit earlier, the other dog I had, and that's why I ask about some of the, what people use in their pesticides, fungicides, insecticides, and that's why I never had that stuff in my backyard. But it's a teddy's law now, my other dog has a lot of pass for it, just for that type of stuff. So anyways, watch your dogs and your pets and all that type of stuff. They only could stand about five minutes out there, most breeds. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Just real quick, piggybacking off of Linda's comment, congratulations to the fire union on a really great cancer fundraiser on Friday. It was, like she mentioned, Night at the Races, Kentucky Derby-themed. It's a, it's a blast, so this, I think, was her third year of doing this, so if you see it for next year, definitely check it out. It's hard to describe, but you're betting on fake virtual horses, and you're watching pre-recorded horse racing, and people get into it like it's actually happening live in front of them, and it's all for a great cause. So check it out if they're doing this again next year. Watch their Facebook page. It's a lot of fun, and it's just a really fun evening. And then finally, see, there's a benefit to going last, because everyone's announced things, so I'm just going to read two nice comments that were posted by residents today about DPW crew appreciation on the residents' group, which, you know, we all could talk up here, we all know how freezing it is out there, but imagine you're working out there in a ditch fixing water main breaks or anything like that, how awful that must be, and I'm so glad and proud of the crew we have, and so are residents. We had at least two nice comments about different projects that were going on, emergency projects that were posted on the residents' group, so I just, I would read these, because it's always nice to see and to hear the words of appreciation for our crews, who I know work really hard, especially when the emergencies happen, as they do when the weather gets awful like it is now and freezing. So resident named Michael writes today, "Have a night, have a new personal appreciation for the Water Department and Emergency Crews who came out just after 8:00 PM on a holiday Monday night to start working on the water main break on Benjamin that started Sunday afternoon. They were out there until 2:15 AM chasing the issue and working in sub-zero nighttime temperatures. Appreciate it all, as nerve-wracking as the experience can be, especially for new homeowners who haven't dealt with this before. We all thank you." And the second one is about a different break that was dealt with. I think it was earlier this morning. Resident named Denise says, "Just wanted to say thank you to the Water Department." Heart emoji, it's really cute. "Last late Sunday night with temperatures so freezing cold, there was a water main break on Chelan Street. Majority of the street was completely flooded, with it being so cold, that meant the street would be dangerous. The crew that was out there worked all night salting and clearing up water. Thank you so much for all you did, still continue to do. We appreciate you." So really nice to see. Thank you to the residents for taking the time to put that out there. Thank you to Brian or our crews for the hard work and response, especially when it's so awful. I think we all hate just walking from the curb to the building. We have guys out there and girls out there working really hard for hours, making sure we keep our streets and water mains, everything in good, safe order, so thank you.
Thank you for pointing it out.
Thank you.
Item 12, City Manager's Report.
No report.
Item 13 is Audience Participation. It is a five-minute time limit. Views and opinions expressed under Audience Participation. Those of the individual citizen do not necessarily represent the views and opinions of the Mayor, Council, City Administration of St. Clair Shores. Anyone like to speak? Mr. Backus, anyone else?
Joseph Backus, 21120 Yale. Just a quick question. Mr. Rebello's starting the fundraising for the parade. Just a quick question, Mr. Rebello, if it's possible. Who do you write to check out to?
Mr. Rebello doesn't answer the question, so we just go to the chair, and we'll see what we can do.
Could you elaborate? Who do you write to check out to, and where you drop off, check that?
The City of St. Clair Shores, we have the memo column, a little saving Memorial Day Parade.
Hundred-dollar club.
Hundred-dollar club, yep, thank you. Anyone else would like to say something? Anyone else would like to speak? Nope? All right, we'll go to the mayor's comments, and they don't have any, so a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
One second.
Move, I'm sorry, was that Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Move by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?